All right, at seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
All right, moving on to recognitions. Jim?
I'd like to begin by explaining to everybody that currently, we do not have a sitting president. We do have a vice president. So, the vice president will lead the meeting until the election of the officers, at which time, I will take over leadership and take us through an election process. So, we then have a sitting president. Once that president is elected, the president then takes over the rest of the election process and then also the rest of the meeting.
All right. Anybody from the board have anything for recognitions?
I just wanted to say thanks for the forensic showcase night. Even though it kind of coincided with a baseball event for our family, it was really nice to see those students be honored to do their piece.
I'd also like to mention, last week, Mrs. Deuce and the third graders for Westview held their Disney extravaganza program over at the high school. And it was phenomenal. They just, I mean, they didn't stop dancing or singing or moving the entire time. And you can just see how much they really enjoy the music performances and the programs. So, it was really neat to see.
Say welcome to our three new sitting board members. Good luck.
It's kind of sassy.
Heartfelt. Anybody else with recognitions from the board? Anybody in the audience?
Beating.
She went.
Move him.
They did, they.
There's a cord in your way.
Actually, I'm gonna get off of what Jen said. Last week, we had our two spring concerts for our third and first grade. And they did a phenomenal job. And Mrs. Deuce is amazing. But to add to that, those third graders have not performed or been in any kind of large setting performance like that since kindergarten. Because in first grade, their program should have been in the spring, too. So, they never got to do that. And then, the first graders, last time, to be all together in a big group like that performing was 4K. So, it was a big event this year when we had those programs. So, they did a great job.
I just want to recognize, outdoor ed, we had last week for our sixth graders. They typically go in the fall. But given the fall was, we did postpone that. And we took them in the spring. Worked out great. Mother Nature wasn't overly cooperative. But special shout out for Paige Leahy and Katrina Hosteller, who are co-chairing kind of that outdoor ed. Keeping a lot of the parts of outdoor ed that everybody loves and revamping different things. And it was just great to have the kids up there. It was a beautiful day on Thursday when I was able to go up. And it's just fun to see the kids interact outside of school. And for so many of them, it is just such a positive experience. So, just wanted to recognize our sixth grade team and all those sixth graders that were up there last week.
To build off what Jason said there, too, I want to recognize the high school students that were a part of that. I've been hearing a lot of outdoor ed stories over the last week or so at the high school. So, it was great memories for them in sixth grade. And I think even better memories for them to go as counselors. So, thank you for doing those programs. It is incredible. Couple of other recognitions that I'd like to make. We have our administrative professionals that were celebrated today. I know there was some stuff posted on Facebook. And at the high school, I just want to say thank you to Molly and Laura for all the work that they do there and then across the district. Just, we have a wonderful group of administrative professionals and they do an incredible job. The last thing I was gonna say is just kind of a recognition. We have, getting a very busy time for the class of 2022. And we're gonna start this Saturday with a PHS scholarship auction and dinner benefit. If you're interested, I know there's some people here that you could talk to about getting tickets to that. But just a great way to raise some money for the graduating class. And thank you to everybody that put effort into making that happen.
And I'll wrap it up. We do have a thank you card that I'll just pass around to board members. And it's from the outdoor ed team. And it's important that we continue this going forward. It's just like everybody who's been through it. It's such a valuable two and a half days for our students. So, a thank you that the board can read that you lead your growth meeting.
Moving on to opportunity for public input. We have, nobody signed up? Nobody else here? All right. Information and discussion items. Meeting presentation.
Yes, Paige Leahy will celebrate School Library Month.
Hello, everybody. So, April is School Library Month. And I was at a conference and they reminded me, sorry. They reminded me that we need to like advocate for ourselves and really celebrate what we do. So, my infographic is just some numbers to kind of give you a sense of what a great library program we have here at Platteville School District. I'm a little biased, obviously, but I think we have one of the best library programs in southwest Wisconsin, honestly. So, these are kind of averages. Obviously, some weeks are way higher, some weeks are lower. But on an average basis, we serve over 40 scheduled classes every week. And that averages out to about 900 kids. At the high school, there are less scheduled classes than, obviously, the younger we get, the more scheduled classes we have. The middle school is kind of a hybrid where there are some scheduled and then there are some impromptu. So, it kind of, the older they get, the less scheduled time they have. But it doesn't mean that it's less valuable. So, if I look at my circulation records, this was maybe two weeks ago. Over 45,000 items have been checked out since September 1st, which is pretty amazing. Obviously, if you look at little kids, they can go through picture books much faster than high schoolers. But that number is still a pretty large number. The average age of, so a lot of these statistics are statistics I can pull from my Destiny, which is my circulation program. I also use something called Follett, which is my book purchaser. And they can do like collection analysis for me as well. So, our average age of our collection is 2005. Obviously, if you have classics in your library, that will take your number down a little bit, right? Because numbers, want to get rid of Sand County Almanac, for example, right? That's a classic, but it will lower the, you know what I mean? So, when you look at the date, you have to kind of keep that in mind. Items per student, I would say my goal is always to work towards 30 items per student. But as you see, sometimes you have, I would say you have to weed so that kids can see what is there. So, I liken it to, if you have a vegetable garden and you have, you're gardening carrots, sometimes you have to pull carrots out so the others can grow. Same thing here. If I want to have forward-facing books, I have to have space to do that. So, we weed pretty regularly, meaning we get rid of books that are, you know, not used after a certain period of time. So, or they're in bad shape, or they're out of date. So, the way the library collections look now is not how it looked last year and it is not how it will look next year. Our collection is diverse. And so, what that means is at least, this is by Follett's standards, 37% of our collection is identified as diverse. Now, I will say, one of my, our whole team's professional development goals this year is to do a diversity audit. And there is no good way to do that. It involves pulling every single book out and looking at the author and looking at all the characters. I have spreadsheets I'd love to show you. But we have only really worked through science fiction and dystopian. So, this statistic is not mine. I would be really interested in a year or two to see how far we get, how the numbers compare. But that's a working number, just so you get a sense. That is something we actively work on, is making sure that all of our children are represented and the experiences that people, you know what I mean? Like that every child can see themselves or can understand other people through what they read. At the high school, Cheryl Schoberg has a wonderful tech team. I don't know if you know about this tech team. But they save our school district a lot of money. I wanted her to give me a number and she was unwilling to commit to a number, how much money we save. But all the kids, once our Chromebooks are out of warranty, if they need a repair, her students do it for us. So, on a regular basis, I will have two, three Chromebooks that get broken in a day. I send them up to the high school. They get repaired, they get sent back. If they're not repairable, she'll salvage the parts so that we can have them again. So, she was, she kept track for me for about a month. And it's about 17 Chromebooks a week that she is able to fix and save for us. So, if you talk about longevity and some ownership of our stuff, it's really a wonderful program that goes through the library. Common School Funds, if you have been in, around for a while, Common School Funds. But we are the only state in the entire United States who is lucky enough to have this. A long time ago, in the 1800s, when they sold off some of the public lands, they put all that money into a trust and designated all the interest from that trust to go to public schools, specifically, public school libraries. And so, this money, Common School Funds, comes directly earmarked for our libraries. And it is $35 a child this year. And that is way up from last year. I think last year, we were maybe $30 per child. It was 32, maybe. I just know it was more than what I anticipated, which is not a bad thing. So, we got $64,000 for the libraries in Common School Funds. And as a librarian, what's lovely about that is no one can take it for anything else. I have to very clearly, when I spend it, say where it is going to and what it's going for. And there are very clear parameters of what I can and can't buy. But what that means is that we have these lovely, fully stocked libraries that are current. And if you talk to people, school librarians from other states, they have sometimes zero budget. So, we are in a really good spot. Sometimes, we have more money than what we know how to, I always say, I want to be very thoughtful in how we spend our money. And so, I don't want to spend it just to spend it. But sometimes, that means then, I have to really work hard to spend it in a thoughtful manner, which is not a bad problem to have. Our libraries generally house 44,000 titles. And that's not even including things for Makerspace or more hands-on activities, such as, all three of Westview, the middle school and the high school, all have green screens. We all have databases and newspapers and magazines and cameras. We had an expedition kit, which was lovely, until Google decided it would no longer support it. So, now, they're just, we have to figure out what we're gonna do with them because they were great. So, we're constantly looking for things to help with technology and support teachers in the classroom. I like to be the yes person a lot of times and be able to say, yes, I can get that for you. Yes, I know how to make that happen for you. And that is a pretty special position to be in. And then, we are well-staffed. So, we are very lucky in that our school board supports what we do and values our libraries because we have three full-time librarians, one full-time library assistant, and one part-time library assistant. So, we are in a really good spot. And I think we can, we do a lot of amazing work in our district. And I'm really excited that we are gonna have a new member next year, who I think will do wonderful things. So, yeah, I'm just really proud of our program and I hope that it stays that way. So, sorry. I don't know, do I have to stand up for questions or am I good?
From the board, any questions or comments that you'd like to share with Paige?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, you don't, you don't do anything with textbooks, say, at all?
I don't. I helped, last year, we bought this Destiny Resource Manager that we use for like managing the Chromebooks and that sort of thing. It certainly can be used for textbooks. And like, I added the bookroom books here in this building. It's a pretty dynamic program that if we wanted to use it for cataloguing more things, we certainly could.
Like any kind of OER push? Like, I know that's quite popular.
Yeah. School uniforms, I mean, you can, you name it and it gives us a way to like manage it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to debt defeasance.
So, Kevin Mullen from Baird, he'll inform the board about the next step in our defeasance process. And this is a process that we approved at our annual meeting back in October. And I believe at this time, Kevin, you're operational.
Great, thanks, Jim. Hello, everyone. And welcome to the new board members. And it's nice to see former board members again. I've been in front of your board a couple of times virtually and once in person. And I'm, I just am wondering if you have the two-page financing plan that was handed out earlier? Summary of cash defeasance on one side and then numbers summarizing the defeasance on the other?
Yes.
So, I'm going to be referring that, to that in this brief presentation. As Jim had mentioned just a moment ago, this is a continuation of a decision that was made back when the board had formulated the budget back in October. At the time that you built your budget back in October, you made the decision to add roughly $600,000 of additional debt service money to your debt service levy to fund debt payments. And you did that for two reasons. The primary reason was, you knew that you were planning for additional needs in the future and you didn't want to whip saw the tax rate. You didn't want to have it drop and then come crashing down and moving back up. So, one of the ways to manage it, and you did this in the previous budget as well, is to prepay and levy additional dollars for debt. It's one of the few ways that you have to manage your levy under the actual revenue limits that are imposed by the state. So, you did that back in October. You have these funds that are going to be used to defees your borrowing. And so, that's what we're discussing tonight. The reason that I'm here this evening is because I wanted to have an opportunity to explain it, especially knowing that there were new board members here. Because at the next board meeting, you will be asked to take action on the formal defeasance. So, this is really an opportunity to understand it and ask questions if you have some questions. So, generally, what we're doing is we're taking the $600,000 and we're going to apply it to one of your, to your referendum-approved debt that was issued back in 2015. So, previously, the board had approved a borrowing that's outstanding. Those bonds can be prepaid beginning in 2024. We're gonna take this $600,000 and we're going to put it into an escrow. That escrow earns interest between now and 2024 and will prepay the bonds at that point in time. And I'll walk through the mechanics of that in a minute. But what that does, it does two things. It takes the debt off the books of the district and then it also creates less debt outstanding and a window of opportunity to approach and finance future needs. So, it's a really nice way to prepare to address additional new capital projects. So, the funds would be deposited into an escrow and they would prepay a portion of that 2015 borrowing. We anticipate that this is going to result in savings to the school district. So, prepaying that debt results in roughly $110,000 worth of interest savings to the district. It's also going to, if we close before the end of June, it gets included in your shared cost, which means it generates state aid, which you'll receive next year. So, it will also have an impact, a positive impact in terms of reducing your budget next year because it'll generate about $75,000 of additional aid to the district heading into next year's budget. On the bottom half of this page is a timeline of the things that need to occur and some of the parties involved in the transaction. The two dates that are important for you as a board, we have tonight checked, which is the opportunity for the board to discuss this. And then, assuming that it is still a strategy that the board wants to move forward with, we would then have documents ready for you at your next board meeting to formally execute the defeasance. So, the money that you've levied has to stay in debt service. It can only be used to prepay this bond. So, really, you, in essence, made that decision back in the budgeting, at budget time back in October. But I did want to have an opportunity for you to understand it. So, any questions at this point? Assuming there are none, I'll ask you to just turn the page and we'll kind of walk through the mechanics of what's going to happen. There are two boxes on the top third of this page. On the left-hand side, that summarizes what your existing debt for that 2015 borrowing looks like right now, today. So, those payments extend from 2022 to 2030. And you can see the interest rates that they're outstanding at and the actual principal and interest payments that are currently scheduled. So, in 2022, we have remaining payments of $967,000 that you're going to be making in September. And then, you can see, moving forward, your normal budget would be roughly $1,244,000 each year through the year 2029. And then, it drops as a result of last year's defeasance to $649,000. If we move forward with this defeasance, what's going to happen is the new money that we're going to be applying to this borrowing gets applied to that debt. And it looks like the after-defeasance schedule in the block on the right. And you'll notice that in 2030, we're basically paying down about $570,000, $580,000 worth of debt principal in 2030. So, we're taking that off. And what it does, if you look on the far right-hand side, it reduces your annual payments and interest by $17,000 a year through 2029. And then, you have a big drop at the end. The reason that we do that is because it maximizes the amount of interest savings. If you compare before and after, you can see that there's a, you know, decent reduction. There are obviously some costs involved in this. So, the box below summarizes what the costs are. So, of the $600,000, $585,000 would go into the escrow account. But there's a fee to put the documentation together. There's a fee for bond counsel, the attorneys that write the opinion. We also need to pay the escrow agent to babysit the funds, as well as you need a CPA to verify that the funds are sufficient to pay off the debt. And that's a very important piece because you're telling the public and the state that that debt is no longer yours, that you've put in sufficient amount of debt to buy treasuries to take that off your books. So, over on the right-hand side, it summarizes the savings. So, if you compare your debt service before and after, that's $710,000 of savings, but obviously, $585,000 is going into the escrow. And there's like roughly $14,000 of expenses. The net savings to the district is $110,000 as a result of doing this. And then additionally, also, the $77,000 worth of aid that's generated off of that. So, when that money is spent, it churns through the aid formula and results in aid next year in your budget. So, that's a lot of information, I realize, and it's not nearly as exciting as talking about libraries and books. But, you know, this is, this is where I live. So, any questions that you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't believe so, not at this time. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Really nice to see you and welcome to the board, to the three new board members.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item, which looks like it is consent agenda.
Within the consent agenda, 5B are the minutes of a previous meeting. 5C would be the hiring of the summer cleaning crew. 5D would be the co-curricular hire next year for eighth-grade volleyball, D. Knornshield. And then, 5E would be the resignation of our girls' swim coach in the fall of '22.
Motion by Kurt, second by Colleen, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Aye, will. Motion carries. On to action items, election of school board officers.
If we can, if we can go through 6A and adopt.
Sorry, yeah, let's do that first. We have to adopt this agenda first. So, I need a motion and a second on that.
Before we have that motion, I would like the board to table items 7D and 7E. Those positions are not ready for recommendation of hire yet.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Matt, to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we can go on to election of school board officers.
So, with the election of school board officers, I will lead the process in taking nominations for the president. When that process is finished, I will then hand over that role of president to the president and then they'll go, that person will go through the remaining officers. At this time, we will take nominations for the position of school board president. This position is open due to Brian Meason retiring from the board.
I'll nominate Josh Grubent.
Okay, you can nominate him.
You go ahead.
I seconded.
I have Kurt nominating Josh Grubent and it being seconded by Colleen. Are there any other nominations? Second call for any other nominations? Third call for any other nominations for the role of president of the school board? All nominations are closed. At this time, if you would, we have one candidate. So, that means it is unanimous. So, there's no need to vote on paper. Would we still need Lynn a roll call or a voice vote?
Sure, we can, just make it.
Okay, so, we have a nomination that's been seconded for Josh as board president. All those in favor?
Aye.
Respond by aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone.
So, I hope you are more elegant at handling than I.
Doubt it. All right. We will move on now to vice president. We'll open it up for nominations. So, we need a motion or a nomination and then a second. Whoever's interested in vice president.
Like to nominate Colleen McCabe?
I'll second that.
We have a motion or a nomination and a second for Colleen McCabe. Any other candidates? Second call, any other candidates? Final call, any other candidates? Let's take it to a voice vote. Colleen McCabe for vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Colleen. Next up is Clerk, who is currently, was Colleen. So, this is open. We have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Matt Zalinski.
Second.
Matt Zalinski has been nominated and seconded by Jen. Any other nominations? Second call for nominations. Final call for nominations. Hearing none, Matt for Clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Congratulations, Matt. Treasurer is currently Kurt. Nominations and a second, please.
I'd like to nominate Kurt.
Second.
Got a second and a third. Nomination for Kurt. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Second call. Any other nomination? Second call. Final call, nominations for treasurer. Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Kurt for treasurer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Kurt, treasurer. WASB delegate.
Before we have nominations, if I can just explain for our newer members, so the WASB is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and every year we have the annual convention in January. And this person serves as the delegate for our district. They'll go through, sometimes it's a very long list, sometimes it's an even longer list of items to consider. This person gets to represent our district and cast the vote. So that's what that role is. And currently, it's being held by Kurt.
Take nominations in a second for anybody who wants to be the WASB delegate.
I think Kurt has served in that role well. He took over my job when I was sick and I had, couldn't attend the meeting. And unless Kurt doesn't want to do it, I would.
I will do it again if.
Ask you to continue, or I'd nominate you to continue in that role.
Have a nomination looking for a second.
I'll second that motion.
We have a nomination and a second for Kurt as the WASB delegate. Any other candidates? Excuse me. Second call, any candidates? Final call, any candidates? Since there are none, we'll take it to a vote. Kurt for WASB delegate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Congratulations again, Kurt. CISA III delegate.
So similar approach, but on a more regional level. Our CISA III serves over thirty schools in southwest Wisconsin headquartered in Finnamore, and this would be, I believe, a monthly opportunity to go and represent our district at that CISA level.
For nominations.
Who currently?
Vicki, I believe, was our CISA III.
Wide open.
At the last year, so it's open.
I would volunteer if anybody cares to, or if somebody has it in mind for somebody
I'll nominate Jen.
You got a nomination for Jen?
Second.
Second for Jen. Any other nominations for W, excuse me, CISA III delegate? Second call for CISA III delegate. Final call, CISA III delegate. Hearing none, we will vote for Jen, CISA III delegate with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Congratulations, Jen. NSBA representative.
National School Board Association.
The easiest job out of any.
Looks good on a resume.
I was at last time, but we haven't attended. They actually, we stepped away from that because of one of, remember? As Wisconsin, we actually stepped away from the, so I didn't have to do anything this year. And we, the reason why we stepped away was because of a controversial.
Statement they put out.
Statement they put out, and then they rescinded it, but they had put it out there. So Wisconsin stepped away.
Damage was already done.
Yeah.
It gives you the opportunity, if you want to, on your dime, go to the NSBA convention, which is usually held somewhere sunny. They don't come up this way much.
It's usually in California, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the event that somebody wanted to, they could be the NSBA representative. Do we have any?
I would care not to any longer, so somebody better want to. Because I just get emails saying we're not regularly. I mean, you do get some publication from.
Because of stuff you can share with the board, pamphlets, magazines.
Yeah.
Emails.
Well, it doesn't sound too scary. I'll try it.
Yeah.
You have a nomination?
I nominate.
Second it.
NSBA representative. Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have that second call for it? Anybody else? Final call, anybody else? All right, Jessica, NSBA representative, voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that's everybody.
It is, but if I could, a bucket.
A lot of paper, Wes.
Thank you.
If I could just remind the board, we do have currently three active committees. And at any time, a board can start and add hot committee, but we have three standing committees. Operations, which consists of the officers of the board. Primary focus is finance. We have program, which focuses a lot on our curriculum. We also have policy and community outreach, which is self-explanatory there. That process, if one of those committees are of interest to you, please communicate with the board president, and our policy board president gets to assign. It's more of a collaborative effort.
Yeah.
So if you have that interest, or if you need to know more about those committees, you can talk to me, and I can match you up and then just communicate with Josh as board president.
If you guys want to shoot me an email, what program or committee you'd want to behind either program or community outreach, as myself, Kurt, and Colleen and Matt being the board officers are already on operations, shoot me an email, let me know what your preference is. We need a minimum of three for each. We have tried to limit it to, we can go up to four. So if they're, you really want to get into program and policy, we could probably make something work that way. So just shoot me an email. Okay.
I think currently program is Kurt and I and.
It was Urfa.
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 And Ryan, and Ryan, so.
They always meet right before, they seem to always meet right before the.
Yep, they, if I'm not mistaken, community outreach and program generally meet at six and then operations at six-thirty. Always the night of the board meeting unless there's something that comes up. So it looks like we probably need a motion and a second to approve the board, what we want to call it, board officers as presented. So we have a motion by Kurt, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Colleen, to approve the board officers that were elected as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. School board schedule.
So we need to determine when we will have our meetings. We will remain with the second and the fourth Wednesdays of each month. The months of June and July, we just meet the first Wednesday. The months of November and December, same practice because of the holiday season. But in this calendar coming up, our fourth Wednesday is during our spring break. So this calendar is stating we will not have that second meeting in March. Otherwise, the pattern holds.
For a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Ben, to approve the meeting schedule for the summer and the 2022-23 school year as presented. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. Eighth grade math teacher.
So it is our recommendation that Christine Hicks be offered the eighth grade mathematics teacher position. She went through a screening process, an interview process, a second round process, and Chris meets our need at the middle school level of being licensed to teach algebra so our eighth grade students can begin to earn that math credit towards high school in eighth grade.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Kurt, to approve the hiring of Christine Hicks as eighth grade math teacher for next year as presented. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. Even though we have tabled the D and E at Jim's request, let's still vote on it to table it. So we need a motion and a second to table item D, the high school education as tech ed teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt, to table item D, high school tech ed teacher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. And need a motion and a second to table the middle school STEM teacher, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Kurt, to table item E, middle school STEM teacher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. On to the six hundred policies.
The second and final reading of this grouping of the six hundred policies has not been altered since they were approved at first reading.
It's all moved.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben, to, that's the wrong one, to approve the six hundred policies as presented for second and final reading. Any questions or comments on that one? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. Center for All contract.
So last spring, the district recruited and formed a partnership with the Center for All. The Center for All is division of CISA VI located in Oshkosh, and they have come in and provided training and resources around diversity, equity, and inclusion for our school district. When we first met with them, they had a three-year plan to walk us through and see us at three years having growth on this topic. With that, we had our first year that we approved. The second year, part of this is to understand that as we advance, we grow, there may be different priorities that arise. So we were able to review what year two could be. And in this, in your packet, is what year two would look like for our district.
Low loading right now.
Good for a motion and a second for that contract.
Both to approve.
Second.
So we got a motion by Matt, second by Colleen, to approve the Center for All contract for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Could I make a friendly amendment on this particular item? I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to pull this item off the agenda for this meeting until the next meeting, just on the chance that we can get everybody else caught up for what is in year two. When we first started the discussion on this, it was a year ago, last April, and I was the only incoming board member. We've got three new board members, and we've got one that's newly appointed. So I would just request that we could pull it off with the understanding that we're not doing anything drastic, we're not changing anything, but pull it off so that we can have some time to ask questions if we want, let the other board members ask any questions that they might have on it, and bring it back at the next board meeting, which would be May 11th.
The motion is out there and has been seconded, so that would take the board to work through the process of rescinding that and then consider Jen's request. That's my understanding of Robert's rules.
So you folks have had access, though. I mean, have you needed to ask any, do you have questions of?
I've read through it, and I don't have any questions. I also.
Yeah, I certainly want to give you enough time to digest it, but I know you've been, well, I don't know if you take these machines home. I always just use my own. But if you have enough access and you feel comfortable, I certainly wouldn't want to rush you, but I'm just trying to hear your concern.
Right. Right. Well, my concern was just that there's a lot in there that, I mean, we're spending the money, but we don't really have a grasp yet of what's all been accomplished. So I'd just like a little bit of time so that everybody could get caught up to speed of what everything is.
Well, I think just the idea that we've already made altercations from the first time we proposed year two to this time. We've made changes. Do we want to highlight any of those changes? Does anybody want to speak to specific reasons for things being?
So if it would help, I have it pulled up here. I can kind of walk through and just give a brief overview, and if it sparks a question as far as, hey, what's that? So this first one is the just-in-time coaching. And really what this is, is if we have an opportunity where a staff member has a specific need to grow, we have contracted for that. It also is when we have those immediate help situations, which we've had a couple this year, where we can call up the two representatives from the Center for All, and they can help guide us through a situation and give us that view, whereas when you're in the middle of a tight situation, it's, you need somebody not involved in it to help guide you through. So that's what that is, contracting out. The second is for the leadership team, those quarterly data digs and strategic development. And that goes along with our strategic plan, goes and supports what we're trying to accomplish with our mission statement of every student, every day, having a safe and inclusive learning environment.
I'll stop that for a moment. I do have one question. Going back to the just-in-time coaching, it says we get up to sixty minutes monthly. Do we know how much of that we've been using? And does it, is it limited to the month, or can it, is it for the year, and that's just what the average is?
It'd be tough to, I can't answer your question, because last year, this wasn't included specifically. This is something that they realized that we were taken advantage of throughout the year. So this is a predictor. I can safely estimate that we'll use more than that time.
Okay.
So you look at building principles, you look at our inclusion advocates. So at each level, high school, middle school, and then at the primary levels, we have one of our staff members as an inclusion advocate. This allows them to call up, let's say a student comes with a need, let's say another staff member or parent, this gives them that ability to do that. I can't say that we've logged that from this year.
Makes sense.
The data dig, strategic development, is to continue to have structure as we go through and advance and build our foundation. And that is when they're onsite, working with our team. The equity walk, report year two. So this year, they came through and they looked mostly at our environment, our classrooms, what was on the walls, what was on the shelves. The second year, the second step is to get more into our, our resources, our curriculum, and our delivery.
Have the results of the first year or the data from the first year? Is that something you've already seen?
We have, and we've shared that with the staff, and we've also shared that with our leadership team, the equity coordinators, those equity, those inclusion advocates.
And I would point out, they did the equity walk September, correct? September 20th or 24th?
Early in the year, yes.
Early in the year. We didn't really have the data from that until, was it February?
Yes.
Or March? Yeah. So, I mean, that's one thing that I would like to see in this, is that we would have some sort of a time expectancy of when we're going to get the information from some of this. So, I mean, that's just one of my concerns in giving this another couple of weeks so that we can address some of those things.
Wouldn't these recommendations be based off of that data, though? Going forward, based off of what's been done, what's being suggested?
Yes.
Yes. Right, but, yeah, but, yeah.
Jen's concern was the turnaround.
Yeah, the turnaround time.
But to support what Betsy's saying, what they discovered helped us drive through what we've done since then. The two workshops for our staff, meeting students where they are, and that's similar to other workshops that we would bring in for our staff or for professional development. This bottom one is a new one. And that is the idea that our coaches and what we're targeting are our youth coaches, not so much the high school level, but those coaches that are that first experience with our students when they're coming through the lower primary age levels. This gives them an opportunity to work with those, train those coaches, so they can engage with all of our students and keep them engaged as they advance through our year. And then finally would be that professional development for our inclusion coaches, something that is a very high priority that our staff members are equipped.
Any other questions on that? Seeing that we do have a motion by Matt and a second by Colleen, we'd have to ask Matt and Colleen if they'd be willing to pull it back to entertain a motion for a tabling.
But it doesn't sound like there needs to be more time with the information, other than them asking questions just about the timeliness of getting data back and.
Yeah, I just don't feel comfortable approving contract for next year when there's still some unanswered questions that I have from this year. So, I mean, I just, I don't.
I'm not sure what the unanswered questions are. I mean, that's the part that, I mean, I feel like having them develop a new plan and actually revise the year two plan because of what they've learned about in the scans and in the work they've done. I feel confident, this is what they do. And what I'm, what I'm seeing, they propose, especially with the addition of the, bringing in the community coaches, I think that's a great pull-in. I mean, what a great way to start being a human early and being supported. Even how do we get our students and our families and our, our community to actually understand what that is? Because quite frankly, on the playing field, it's sometimes where we say it review, you know, your character is revealed, not built. So that's where we need the best and the softest touch with our kids, understanding, you know, how to be in competition and be friendly, how to be supportive. I think that's a great add. I mean, they did it for a reason, Jen.
No, and I'm not suggesting that there's anything wrong with the contract as it sits. I just feel like, I, when I started a year ago, I basically came and had to approve this, not knowing any of the background of how we came to this place.
Yeah.
And I know how that made me feel. I had so many questions that I just, you know, processes and everything. And we're in a very unique situation with this board in that we have three brand-new members that haven't had the background of all the work that has been done to put together the plan. And, you know, and last week, when we had the, you know, the informational session portion of it, there was only one person here from that committee, but there really wasn't any opportunity for anybody to ask any, or to get any feedback if they did have questions. So that's the only reason I'm suggesting that we pull it off, just so that we can get the background, so that we can make sure that we have everything in place. And then, you know, I'm not, I'm not discounting anything that's in here, just that, you know, I think it's important that everybody knows what's going on.
And I'm, I, I think that the three members that have been selected by the community are engaged, and I think they've been engaged, and they're really good at asking questions when they need to from either other board members or Jim. So I, I have full confidence that if they're confident.
Yeah.
I feel, I feel confident keeping our motion on the table.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Moving on to general contractor agreement.
So letter H, the general contractor agreement with Myron Construction. The process that we've went through is the board had interviewed, started off with six requests for proposals, narrowed to three, there was an in-person interview, they've selected Myron Construction, at which point in time, Myron Construction gives a contract. And that contract is rather standard for the industry. And once they provide that, we have our legal counsel review it, and that is where those addendums come into play. Protections for the district, protections for Myron. Our legal counsel has approved this, I'm in favor of this, as well as Myron Construction, they've signed off on it as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Kurt to approve the Myron Construction contract as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. Activities complex contractor agreement.
Very similar process. There was an interview, we had two requests for proposals to be submitted, point of beginnings was selected, they submit the contract, our legal team reviews it, they review it, we have that addendum section in which both agree to, and it's in front of the board for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Matt to approve the point of beginnings activities complex contractor agreement as presented. Any questions or comments on that?
I do have one question, and that is about the, on part E, like the fundraising referendum support, are we doing our own promotion of that? Because the line that's crossed out was they create personalized marketing materials, not limited to handouts, et cetera, first email blasts.
So let me pull up what you're speaking of.
Page six.
Page six.
What page?
Page six.
Page six. Okay, and so you're saying that's crossed out, and then seeing the addendum for language replacing the above struck bullet? So I believe that would be further down in... The addendums. So what is the question specifically that I can help?
If they're not doing it, are we providing that material and promotional?
I'm at...
For the referendum, are we creating all of our own marketing materials as it's going to be presented to the community?
It is a partnership where the point of beginnings will participate, is they'll have a conversation with ourselves, with Jordan as our marketing communication specialist, and we'll come up with a plan. What they are able to present are, for example, at the puzzle play that we hosted last Thursday night, there was a giant map that they had their drone.
Okay.
They're taking care of that.
Okay.
What they're guarding against is being responsible to pay for every flyer.
Okay.
And then being, having it being taken advantage of, that we want thousands of things, whereas we know a limit and there's a reasonable amount towards that. But they are, they are very critical in coming up with that information.
But then it gets included in the overall actually referendum plan that's announced with, with Myron.
PRA, Myron.
I mean, so there's joint marketing at that point in time.
Yes, so one way to look at it is, we have the district, we're the client, and then we have three partners. One is our PRA, the architect, who has been with us since a year ago, February. Then we have Myron Construction, point of beginnings. And all four entities meet to come up with a coherent plan to help market. And in the community outreach packet is a good calendar that'll help lay out and kind of give a better understanding as far as what those are.
We're just not relying on them for printing and materials and things like that.
They're engaged in the marketing, so, yeah, so to speak.
For example, we paid for the survey. They did not.
Did we do the borings yet?
That occurred this week. It will, they came and mapped it out. I think the borings will be completed at the end of this week.
Yeah.
Check your weekly update for that information.
Any other questions on the point of beginnings activity complex contractor agreement as presented? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will adjourn to executive closed session pursuant to state statute 19.85 parent one, parent A, and parent F of the Wisconsin statute and FERPA. This requires a roll call vote. Jessica, you want to go to closed session?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Lisa's not here, I do, yes. Ben?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
We are in executive closed session. Thank you.